Patricia. Will you let them know they need to read that? Or they need to...
I think we're gonna go in there first.
Oh, we're gonna do a public hearing? And then go in there?
Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the invocation, Pledge of Allegiance, and the Texas Pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Father, I lift the city of Corinth up to you that it may continue to lead this area with godly principles and continue to transform our region into what you have intended. And we pray for peace and health in our land, in wisdom, in unity, in patience for its leaders, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is kings, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Citizens' comments, please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments about any of the council agenda items are appreciated by the council and may be taken into consideration at this time or during that agenda item. Council is prohibited from acting on or discussing items brought before them at this time.
Yes.
Item obtained a motion under consent agenda.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? On paper? Oh, cast your vote. Okay, public hearings. Item number 11, consider an act on the ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of Corinth, each being a part of the Unified Development Code to rezone approximately 20.6 acres from I industrial to MXC mixed use commercial, with the subject property being located at 1500 North Corinth Street, case number ZMA 24-002, North Central Texas College MXC rezoning. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Our planning and zoning director, Melissa Daly, will cover this item and answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This zoning request is for the NCTC campus, and they have requested, in part of the downtown planning process, that we consider the potential of rezoning the campus. And I apologize if I go wrong, but after here. Here it is. So it's the campus downtown, highlighted in yellow. And after we had the downtown workshop in February, we began the process, as you know, of looking at our mixed-use standards, which were adopted in April. At that point, we looked at the rezoning of the city properties, as well as the EDC properties, which you've approved previously, and then began reaching out to some of the property owners. And so we've had multiple meetings with the college, who is really interested in working with us on the downtown plan and would like to request proceeding on the rezoning to MXC. It's currently zoned I. This is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the land use and development strategy in the comprehensive plan. As you can see, it's transit-oriented development, which is the area in pink. Staff has received no letters of support or opposition, other than, of course, except, of course, the staff at NCTC. P&amp;Z unanimously recommended approval on June 24th at their regular meeting, and staff does recommend approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council? At this time, I'll open it up for a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak to this issue? If not, public hearing, I entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve ordinance number 2407-1826, case number ZMA 24-0002, as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item number 12, consider an act on the ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of Corinth, each being a part of the Unified Development Code to rezone five properties totaling approximately 10.9 acres from planned development, number 44, PD 44, to MXC mixed-use commercial, with the subject properties being generally located at the northeast corner of Lake Sharon Drive and south I-35E, case number ZMA 24-004, Millennium MXC rezoning. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Items 12 and 13 are companion items, and Melissa will cover both of those as well. Answer any questions.
Thank you. So the Millennium Development has completed, of course, phase one with the apartments, retail building, and an event venue, and we're looking at the development of phase two. They asked to meet with us, and we talked to them a little bit about the MXC standards, the changes to the design standards that were approved in April. This development has MXC underlying, or has a base zoning for their PD. And so in discussing with them their plans for phase two of the development, one of the things that became very apparent is that the MXC straight zoning may be more appropriate for what it is they're looking at doing. And so the Millennium property, as you can see, is located at Lake Sharon Drive and I-35, and they're looking at the redevelopment of the vacant parcels in front of the apartments and the retail buildings and the hotel they're on site. So have requested that we proceed on a request for MXC straight zoning for this phase two of the development. This is the plan that's in the current PD, and it has essentially some retail pad sites that are proposed for the remainder of the development. This is highly conceptual, but this is a concept that they approached us about, and it's important to remember that the request tonight is for straight zoning to MXC, so this could change. It would just need to be consistent with the MXC design standards that the council approved in April. But this development is actually, I think, pretty exciting in terms of potentially being a real catalyst for development in the area south of the downtown area. Proposes a significant amount of retail development, a parking garage, that would allow for a higher level of development by having structured parking and not a lot of surface parking, some additional residential that would support the retail on site. So it does propose quite a bit more retail development, square footage of retail development than was proposed in the current PD. This is the area that would be rezoned if it's approved this evening. So key differences in the current PD versus the straight MXC, the site layout would be required to match the PD design map in the existing PD, so it's pretty restrictive. So the concept that I showed you, it would have to match that exactly. Residential is not allowed currently in the remaining parcels in the existing PD. A specific use permit is required for a parking garage or a festival in the existing PD. There's a shared parking schedule for various uses that are specifically outlined, which may or may not respond to market needs as the property develops. And the building form is akin to standard C District form, so significant setback requirements, for example, for retail, you can have the retail at the property line. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which calls for transit-oriented development, so also in the pink. Staff has received one letter of support from the adjacent property owner, no letters of opposition. P&amp;Z did unanimously recommend approval on July 11th, and staff recommends approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council?
Can you go back to the layout?
Which map?
The layout.
Concept.
I can't. Okay. Where are we here?
There. So this is saying that this 4-3-1-1 can only be retail and not the MXC?
No, this is just a concept that was presented. If the MXC zoning is approved, that's a straight zoning. It doesn't rely on a particular concept. So this is what they are proposing as a concept layout, but it could change.
So they're proposing, I don't know if it's...
Yeah, this is similar to what you told. It's the same concept. What's the residential-retail ratio to that MXC?
There's not a ratio, but retail is required at the ground level.
That's right. So there's not a ratio or percentage?
No.
Ground level has to be retail?
You can go up to five stories, and you must have the retail at the ground level.
So if they wanted to do straight apartments, like shown in pink, that would require some kind of additional approval from us, unless they're retail?
Correct, and they are planning for retail at that ground level. They don't, it's not shown in the red, but they are planning for retail on that block too, at the ground level.
So they couldn't do in the back what they've done in front? They couldn't just build big apartments, nothing else? They would have a retail on the first floor?
Correct. Of course, the standards only require 60% retail frontage, and that's filled out for drives and, for example, garage entrances and things like that. They're just necessary for the development. But at least 60% of the block aside must be retail.
Thank you.
Or commercial use, I should say. It could be some other...
But no residential on the bottom floor?
Correct.
And then the gray, that's parking garage?
I want to rephrase. You can, but you must have 60%.
You gotta have that MXC.
Okay. And then the gray is parking garage?
Correct.
Okay. Now, that's what I thought I remembered.
And part of the, again, this is a concept, but part of the gray and the pink, at the ground level, would need to be retail, and they're planning on that.
Even on the parking garage piece?
Correct. It's required in our MXC standards that you must have some kind of ride, or you must have, of course, excluding entrances and exits.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll open it up for a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this? Not? I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 21-07-18-27, case number ZMA 24-0004, as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item number 13, consider an act on the ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of Corinth, each being a part of the Unified Development Code by amending the boundaries of the planned development, number 44, PD 44, as adopted by ordinance number 16-08-18-26, to remove five properties totaling approximately 10.9 acres, generally located at the northeast corner of the Lake Sharon Drive and southeast I-35E, case number ZapD 24-005, PD-44, boundary amendment. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is the companion item related to the zoning change that you just made. Melissa will cover this one as well.
This is pretty short. So since you've approved the previous item, these parcels need to come out of PD 44, and that's essentially what this item is, is to remove those parcels from the existing PD 44. And this is the part in the shaded area that would be removed and become MXC. And again, we've received one letter of support and no letters of opposition. P&amp;Z unanimously recommended approval on June 24th, and staff does recommend approval. Pending approval of the previous item, which you did approve.
Is there any question from council? Okay. At this time, I'll open it up for a public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this? Not? I'll close the public hearing. I entertain a motion on that item.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve case number ZapD 24-0005 and PD-44.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, item number 14, consider an act and a resolution for the appointment of one member to the Board of Managers of the Denco Area 911 District. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As you saw in your packet, we have two nominees for the Denco 911 Board, Jim Carter and Greg Conlon. Vote their resumes. They're in your packet, and they're asking us to consider placing a vote for one of those gentlemen.
Okay. Do I have a recommendation from the council?
I've got a question. Does staff sway one way or the other on either one of these candidates?
I don't know that we sway. I know Mr. Carter has been on this board for quite some time, and I think he's received your vote in the Pet Knocks since I've been here, but just because it hadn't come up. He was nominated by...
Everybody else?
Many other cities. He's been on the board quite some time.
I've got Mr. Conlon's in Highland Village. I've got Mr. Conlon's in Highland Village. Yeah. I'd make a recommendation to nominate Jim Carter.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Cast your vote.
It's not. Okay.
Oh, there it goes. Sorry.
Okay. It's unanimous. Mr. Carter?
Mr. Carter? Do you want to pull item number 15?
Mayor, I'd make a recommendation on item 15. If I could have some executive session under economic development to update you on a few points of the agreement. Get some input before we take action on that item.
Okay, so we're going to, we'll discuss that in executive session. Come on, be executive session. Okay, item number 16, consider an act on change order number, change order two, with Walter P. Moore for the engineering of Walton Drive in the amount of $47,060 for a total contract price of $512,900 for engineering redesign of Walton Drive and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Lynn Barker, our Public Works Director, will cover this item. Answer any questions?
I was getting a little jealous. She was taking off the spotlight earlier. So this is the Walton Drive project, the engineering services for it. We wanted to add in landscape design to it, which was $47,000, and shrink the road from 12 foot down to 11 foot. The cost difference will be pretty much break even with the reduced amount of concrete cost and the addition of landscape charges. And the main reason for that is so that it's safer, more walkable area then. Any questions?
If it's going to be breaking even, then why do we need to increase?
The overall cost of the project, so the cost of construction for the concrete versus the landscape. But the engineering design is $47,000. You can increase our engineering designs, say, if you go back and redesign it, if it was walkable.
So that Walton Drive is just going to be two lanes?
Yes, two lanes.
And the, what's it called? Roundabout? I wanted to call it a silly circle. That's, that's what ours is called. That's one way too, so you won't have any merging like we have to do on Lake Sharon. It'll just seamlessly kind of go into there.
Correct. Seamlessly, both lanes will have parking, so parallel parking on both sides.
On Walton?
Yes.
Okay.
And there. Two lanes, length foot wide.
And are we doing like Melissa had talked about with the trees on the inside?
Yes, that's the landscape part of it that we added to the design.
Okay.
Trees are curved.
Curved, that's the word. I'm sorry. Thanks, Lynn.
Are there any other questions, comments? Okay, I entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I would move to approve change order number two for the engineering of Walton Drive in an amount not to exceed $47,060 and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Mr. Campbell, on item number 17, you want to pull that item?
We need a little advice from attorney on that one, Mayor, before we come out and enact. Patricia's got some information she needs to...
Okay. All right. So purpose of this section is to allow each council member the opportunity to provide general updates and/or comments to fellow council members, the public and our staff on any issue or future events. Also, in accordance with section 30.085 of the Code of Ordinances, at this time, any council member may direct that an item be added as a business item to any future agenda. Mr. Barker?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
I just want to make sure that I reiterate a request that I made earlier, that we have a specific time and workshop to discuss how the city can partner with walking groups, cycling group for these type of events, the Police 5K, not only identifying them, but what kind of support the city feels that maybe we can participate with. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Henderson?
Just want to invite everyone, July 23rd, 4 to 6, Point Bank in Corinth is having their 140th anniversary, and they've asked us all to come, and they're going to do a rooming cutting and celebrate. They're doing it in all their cities, so if we could show up, that would be great.
What time?
Between 4:00 and 6:00 on July 23rd. That's next Tuesday.
Okay. Ms. Pickens?
I have nothing, Mayor, thanks.
Mr. Campbell?
Just a quick reminder, Mayor, that our August 1st meeting, we've kind of changed the schedule a little bit. There'll be no council meeting that night, and our first meeting in August will be on the 8th, due to the budget schedule.
Don't we also have the commission dinner?
Oh, when we do, we have the boards and commission dinner on August 1st instead of a council meeting. You're right, thank you. That's correct.
Okay. All right, at this time, we're going to go into executive session and talk about EDC, which is 551.087, and legal advice, which is 551.071. Going to executive session at 7:02.
All right, this time we're going to go into executive session and talk about EDC, which is five-five-one point oh eight seven, and legal advice, which is five-five-one four seven one. Going to executive session at seven-two.
Yeah, I think it's your favorite time for the...
Yes, sir. I gave it to Lana on my view tomorrow. She's gonna get cute as well.
All right, okay.
Okay, we're back in regular session. Item number 15, consider an act on ordinance of the city of Corinth approving and authorizing execution of a developer participation agreement with Wolverine Interest LLC for the construction of certain public drainage improvements and approximately 4.542 acres, more specifically described as a Gora block one, block B in the J.P. Walton survey, abstract number 1389, City of Corinth, Denton County, Texas, and providing an effective date. I'd entertain a motion on that item.
Mayor, I would move to approve ordinance number 24-07-18-29 and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item number 17, consider an act on a resolution of the city council of the city of Corinth, Texas, finding that a public necessity exists and authorizing condemnation to acquire a 6.48 acreage drainage easement for municipal purposes on real property generally described as being located in the William C. Garrison survey, abstract number 508, property ID number 313491, City of Corinth, Denton County, Texas. Such property is generally located west of Silver Meadows Lane and approximately 160 feet of Silver Meadows Lane and Sharon Drive intersection on the west side. Mr. Campbell.
Mayor, this is a project, as you know, that we're working on for the Lynchburg Creek drainage project, and we're making this recommendation tonight just to kind of keep this process moving. As you know, we are in negotiations with the property owner, and I think we'll be able to work through that, but we need to recommend this item tonight so we can keep the project going and make sure we don't put the grant in jeopardy. Just didn't want to waste that time.
Is there any questions on this? Okay, I'd entertain a motion on that item.
Mayor, I would move that the city of Corinth authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire a 6.48 acre drainage easement on the real property generally described as being located in the William C. Garrison, abstract number 508, property ID 313491, Denton County, Texas. Such property generally located west of Silver Meadow Lane and approximately 160 feet of Silver Meadow Lane and Sharon Drive intersection on the west side is more fully described and depicted in exhibit A of the proposed resolution for this item for a public purpose and to use to install and maintain public facilities, including but not limited to the municipal purpose of drainage grading such a pertinent facilities as may be necessary and other public uses, and adopt resolution number 24-0718-04 with this record vote applying to the unit of property to be condemned. I'll second.
Is there any further discussion?
This has to be a roll call vote?
Okay.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Garber?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Pickens?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Okay. We are adjourned.